Good evening and welcome to City Hall, just a little bit after six. Thanks for being here tonight. Before we officially start, I want to take this time to say a few words in honor of Dick Wilson. Dick was the president of Jefferson Bank. Dick died yesterday after a very long battle with cancer. Dick has survived, actually Dick was one of our original charter members who helped frame our city charter as we see it today. Dick was born in Jefferson City and was active in our community his whole life. Matter of fact, last year on our half-cent sales tax, we needed a heavy hitter to step to the plate and help be our treasurer, and Dick took that on. He will be sadly missed by many. Dick was married to Nancy, obviously, and they had three children, Timothy, Bradley, and Elizabeth Ann. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Wilson family tonight. Now we have a prayer led by Bill Lubert, and then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings of this day and this beautiful spring season. As we enter Holy Week, let us reflect on the great sacrifice your son Jesus made for us. Let us reflect on the fact that his enemies thought by killing him, they could kill his message. His rising from the dead proved quite the opposite. As we worship in our own way this Holy Week, let us renew our resolve to adhere to Christian principles in all aspects of our lives. Bless and protect our police, fire, and military personnel as they carry out their dangerous duties. We ask special blessing on those suffering from illness, injury, or distress for any reason. Grand wisdom to this council and mayor and our deliberations. God bless us all. God bless America. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to City Hall. Do we have any scouts or girl scouts in the crowd tonight? Okay, we will start off with roll call, please.
Gray.
Here.
Carol, here.
Harvey.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Next, we have a special guest with us tonight. It's not very often in a town this size that we are lucky enough to have someone that lives amongst us that has turned 100 years old. Ms. Delfina Morgan, could you please come forward? A compliment to Ms. Morgan, as I'm looking around the crowd, I could not pick out who was 100, so... Whereas Mrs. Delfina Morgan has celebrated 100 years of life experiences, and whereas she has promoted goodwill within our community, and whereas she has served in her church as a door greeter and a conveyance of joy, warmth, and hospitality. She has welcomed every person, obviously, within her church. Whereas we should be reminded of one of Ms. Morgan's favorite comments, "I'm excited about every day of my life." In recognition of Ms. Morgan's 100th birthday and in appreciation of her contributions to her family and our community, now therefore I, Eric J. Strumpf, Mayor of Jefferson City, do hereby proclaim today as Delfina Morgan Day in Jefferson City. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We meet again. I'm kinda like the game show host, have you noticed that? I was telling you earlier that my grandmother passed away just before her 100th birthday, so giving you to this is very touching to me. And I want you to know, here's one of our city coins, all these are numbered, and Nathan was thinking ahead, this one is number 100.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Would you like to say, would you like to say anything?
Thank you all. This is a great honor, and you just know, being 100 is great, so I recommend you all try.
All right, thank you again for coming.
Is there someone from the library here? Oh, here you come. Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you tell the audience your name, please?
I'm Claudia Schoonover from Missouri River Regional Library.
Thank you. Whereas National Library Week will be celebrated the week of April 8th, and the Missouri River Regional Library has numerous activities to mark this occasion during the 14th Annual Mid-Missouri Storytelling Festival. Whereas the Missouri River Regional Library is a cultural hub that provides its patrons with lectures, art exhibits, poetry readings, and much, much more, free of charge. And whereas the library is a community center that offers free meeting rooms, book clubs, yoga classes, and other social activities for the people of Jefferson City. And whereas the Missouri River Regional Library has joined the National Geek the Library effort, a campaign to raise awareness of local public libraries, which began as a result of a grant from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strumpf, Mayor of Jefferson City, do hereby call you to celebrate National Library Week to be observed on April 8th through the 14th. You come up, please?
Thank you.
Welcome. Whereas emergencies require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services that can occur at any time, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas public safety telecommunications are often the first and most critical contact of our citizens with our emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunications of Jefferson City Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries. And whereas public safety telecommunications operators have exhibited empathy, composure, and extraordinary competence in the performance of their professional duties. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strumpf, Mayor of Jefferson City, do hereby proclaim April 8th through the 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Captain Senova. Congratulations. Thank you, Bob. Okay, next on our agenda, if I could have Kendall Gillis and Olivia Petty come forward, please, up to the podium here. I would ask Councilman Coon to give us just a little bit of history behind what we're getting ready to see here. Councilman Coon.
For the last five years, we've had a civics writing contest at South School. The students, every fifth grade student writes a paper, which is judged, and it's a blind judging, there's only numbers on the papers so that nobody can pick their favorite student. And we have an award ceremony, and award, make awards to the top 10 students who had papers, and then the top two get to come to a council meeting. And I believe they're gonna take over this and just talk about the process. The only thing I'd like to do before they start that is just recognize their teachers who have done this for the last several years, and I believe you went to school with Ms. Thompson?
Yes, is she here? Oh, there she is, hey Gwen?
Schoolmates.
Welcome back.
And Ms. Casey Massman.
All right, thanks for being here.
So, guys, you're up.
Good evening, my name is Kendall Gillis.
My name is Olivia Petty. We are fifth grade students at South Elementary School. We participated in an essay contest sponsored by City Councilman Rich Coon. He donated some fabulous prizes and medals. The theme for the essay was "There Ought to Be a Law." We thought about some things we wanted to see changed and thought that a law may help to make those changes. City Councilman Coon arranged for guest speaker to come to our school, to come to our school. We heard from the city administrator, Nathan Nicholas. Kendall and I have been placed in the top two at our school. We would like to share our essays with you tonight. Kendall will go first, and I will follow him. Thank you for listening.
Point of order?
Go ahead, sir.
Weren't you going to invite them to sit in your chair?
Yes, that's part of the operations tonight. Whoever wants to go first, looks like Kendall, you're first on the agenda. You can have a seat there next to Mr. Nathan. Nathan might make sure your mic's on.
You're riding your bike down a road, and you're approaching the top of a hill. Then you start going down, and a car's coming up. But you don't care because you're on the side of the road. The car is on the wrong side of the road and hits the back of your wheel. Don't you think there should be something to help prevent this from happening? This won't happen if you put bike lanes on the street. If there were bike lanes, the car maybe wouldn't have hit you, and you might not have gotten We need bike lanes on our streets because streets aren't safe for kids to ride their bikes. Roads that have hills are really dangerous because kids can't see the cars coming up over the hill. Sometimes people drive close to the side of the road where kids ride their bikes, and sometimes kids get hurt. When they get hurt, they might die or get hurt really bad. I think the police will make sure that this law is followed because they're on the streets every day, and they can make sure bike lanes are painted on the streets. This law would probably go through the city council, then the mayor. After it goes to the mayor, it will go to the police to make sure it's followed. I think the community will improve by this law because kids will be able to ride their bikes safely in the streets where the parents can't see them. More people would be in shape because there's somewhere to ride. If people have somewhere to ride, they might ride their bikes, and less people would be using cars to get around. You see, putting bike lanes on the streets would help shrink the death rate, and I heard that 35% of Missouri deaths are caused by getting hit. I think it's a very good idea to put bike lanes in the street. What about you?
Ms. Petty, I believe it's your turn.
I want to enforce stronger punishments for bullying. A lot of schools don't give strong enough punishments for bullying, whether it's physical or non-physical bullying. We need to give harsher punishments for bullying because people are saying cruel things which leads to the victim to not feel confident about themselves or even hurt themselves. A bully shouldn't be by themselves or owe recess if they punch someone or call them a terrible name. The bully doesn't get the message if they know that all that will happen is that they will just have to miss recess or apologize. If that is all they have to do, then why even punish them if you and I both know that they will just keep doing their thing? The punishment would have to depend on the situation. The more serious the situation, the more serious the punishment. If I were in charge about who enforces the law, I would say the school staff or the superintendent of the schools. They would watch, or someone would tell them who the bully is and who the victim is, and also what the problem is. The community will improve if there are harsher punishments because a lot of people will be happier and not depressed because someone rudely commented about someone else's appearance. I feel that there should be harsher punishments for bullying because if someone told a person that they're repulsive or they're not cool enough, even when those things aren't true. The bully just says those things to get pleasure or humor. It will also teach people in the city that bullying is a very bad thing, and it should be stopped. Some people say, "Stop bullying," but all they do is make posters or signs that usually say something like "Bully-Free Zone." On the other hand, some people do try to stop bullying, but it doesn't work. I want to stop bullying and save people from depression and misery.
Didn't you have one thing for the stu-
Yes, I do. Kendall and Olivia, if you guys could come back up here, please? You don't have to wait until you're 100 to get these signed. You guys both did a great job. Are you gonna come back here and sit in this seat again someday, when you're a little older? Maybe? All right, guys. Here's a city coin for both of you. A round of applause for them and their parents. Thank you very much for being here. I'd like to especially thank Councilman Coon for working on this through the years, and I believe there's someone that's willing to take over this project, is that right?
I think next year, Councilman Schulte is going to invite the kids to the council meeting to read their paper, and I'll take care of the end from South School, making sure that there's appropriate incentives for participation.
Okay. Richard, thank you very much for doing that. Coming up next, we have under public hearings, Roger Schwartz is here to talk about some changes possibly with Jeff Tran service changes. Good evening, Roger.
Good evening, Mayor. First of all, we've got some of our staff from Jeff Tran here this evening, and I don't know how many of you know some of them, but I thought I'd take the opportunity to introduce them. First of all, Richard Turner is our director of our transit operations, and then to his left, or to our left, is Bill Lubert, our newest employee with the Transit Division, and then in the back is Ken Brown, also with our Transit Division. Want to tell you about a proposed major change that we're asking for your consideration of our transit system this evening. First of all, the council did approve changes that went into effect January 3rd of this year in our transit system. Those included the addition of a new south route, which is the map that's up on the screen right now, and then also the change to a 40-minute headway. The 40-minute headway has done great things for us in helping our on-time performance. All of our buses are now running on time. In fact, some of them actually have a little spare time on their route, and they're keeping you on schedule, so that has been a very good thing. The south route, on the other hand, we've not been as successful with. We've tried to promote this thing a number of ways. We had ads in the paper, we were on the radio talking about it, the staff sent flyers out, and we also contacted the school, and they actually sent flyers home with all of the students from the schools out there. But despite our efforts, we've not been successful in increasing the ridership on this south route. We're only averaging 22 passengers for the entire day's operation out there, so we don't believe it is a good expenditure of city funds to keep operating this. So, part of our change this evening is to recommend eliminating this south route. This is looking at the entire system, and it's kinda hard to see the colors, but what we're proposing to do, this area in here represents the Capitol Mall route, where it runs, and if we eliminate this south route, we're proposing to add to the Capitol Mall route the portion that would come out to the fairgrounds and back again as part of the Capitol Mall route. So we would actually pick up a fairly significant amount of what the south route covers today, and we're actually picking up the area where the most riders have been. Our problem on the south route is, if you look, you know, we've got a section of 179 that was on there, well, there's nobody to pick up on that section of highway. And the same way with West Edgewood, you know, Ria's Restaurant really is the only stop on that western edge, so there just wasn't any ridership in that area. Now, we think long-term moving forward, once St. Mary's moves out there, things will certainly change, and there may be some need to look at that further in the future. Now, another proposed change that we are proposing is on the southwest route. Today, it comes down Stadium Drive and made a loop and came back. We're proposing to extend that a little further on Stadium and actually get down to JCMG there at Edgewood, and then come back along Edgewood and get back on the route again. This will provide service that's coming out of the downtown area and get all the way to JCMG, so there's time on that route, and we think that will be a positive thing for folks riding the system. The other changes we're proposing are on the east side, the Business 50 East Route. We're proposing it goes on Elm Street today. We were proposing to change that and actually have it continue on McCarty till it gets to Eastland, and then come down Eastland, and will provide service to Lewis &amp; Clark School. And then also, the High Street East Route, we would propose to change and have it come down this portion of Elm Street and around back on Bald Hill. Bald Hill was an area that had been serviced many years ago and had not had service recently, so we see that as a change that also should be very positive for the residents out there. We did hold a public meeting to get comments on these proposed changes on March 13th. We did receive two comments, they're in your packet, and hopefully we'll have some other folks here to talk about that this evening. Looking at if we make these changes, the elimination of this south route, we would propose to make that effective April 16th, tax day. Thought it would be a good day that everybody could remember. But if we also make that change, it could save the city $130,625 for the remainder of this fiscal year, so a fairly significant cost change there. And believe it or not, we lost two drivers here about a month ago, so we actually don't have any extra staff either. We would actually be down to the right number of staff if this route does get eliminated. And with that, I'd open it up for whatever questions you may have.
Any questions for Roger this time? Dr. Pope?
Roger, you mentioned that Lewis &amp; Clark would be served, does TJ continue service?
Yes, it would. The Capitol Mall route would go down South Country Club and make that loop around the fairgrounds and come past Thomas Jefferson, so both the middle schools would have service. And, you know, right now, Lewis &amp; Clark does not have service, so we would hope that would be a positive.
You would also have service to Modine, correct?
Yes, that is right.
Okay. I know you had said there was some ridership out there. Councilman Scrivner?
Roger, you mentioned that you're going to add Bald Hill, and that it had been previously serviced. Did you, you know, inquire in the neighborhood or anything, see if there would be any indication that people would maybe in favor of that again?
Well, we didn't go out to visit people in the neighborhood, but the folks at our Transit Department know that we had riders out there previously, and we would certainly hope that those folks would again ride the system. And we're offering those changes simply because the 40-minute timeline that we're using on our routes now is allowing a little bit of extra time on those routes, so that we can pick those up.
Any other questions, Roger? All right, thank you, Roger. Any other comments? Seeing none at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion, actually, we need to have the reading first? Yes, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment on Resolution 2011-44. Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak against? Okay, now council debate? No comments? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2011-44. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Gray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to number seven, which is minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. This is from our boards and commissions. We appreciate everyone's work. Public Works and Planning Committee of February 23rd, Finance Reports of November and December of 2011, and January and February of 2012, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners from February 21st, Historic Preservation Commission from February 21st, Campo Board of Directors from January 18th, 2012. Moving on, we'll move on to council committee reports at this point in time. The first one is chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll, the Administration Committee. Carrie.
Thank you. The Administration Committee will not meet at our usually scheduled time in April. We're going to wait until after the new council comes on board, since our meeting typically would be right around the election, so we will not have a meeting. We're going to try to find a date that would work for future Administration Committee meetings that will not conflict with traffic and transportation, because we seem to meet the same day and time as that. So, we will change the date and time after the new council and new committees have been appointed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. And Carrie, thanks for all you do with that committee. Moving on to the Finance Committee, Councilman Rich Coon.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee has not met since the last city council meeting, and we also have canceled our meeting until after the new Finance Committee is selected.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Coon. And Rich, thanks for all your hard work on the Finance Committee, you've done a great job there. Public Safety Committee, Mike Harvey was gone at the last meeting. I do want to thank Mike for his years of service on that committee, and I understand Dr. Pope has an update on their next meeting.
Public Safety met this past Thursday, March 29th, and we discussed, there were three issues that came up. First of all, Captain Senova and Bill Betts of IT presented the information that moved us to introduce Bill 2011-167 in tonight's agenda. That will be explained by Captain Senova. Additionally, the Chief Rennick had some further discussion for us about the fire improvement plan, 2011-164, which will come up tonight. And also, Chief discussed the upcoming change to fire code, the International Fire Code, which we will be dealing with in the near future. Our next meeting also will be following the election and the assignment of committee membership. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pope. Puppet Works and Planning Committee, Mr. Scrivner.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last meeting was Thursday, March 22nd, and we had 10 agenda items. I guess the three major items on the agenda was tax bill consolidation, which was something presented to us by Roger and Drew in regard to tax billing, persons who have improvements done at their homes, flood map update, and then the adoption of fire and building codes. Those are things that- Those are things that will be coming before the council at some point. The rest of it dealt primarily with permissive use of right-of-way issues and leases at both the airport and at Algoa Wastewater Treatment Facility. Our next meeting has actually been rescheduled from our normal date to Thursday, April 12th, which will be this, or excuse me, next Thursday after the Brown Bagel meeting. Brown Bagel will be at 7:30 and then our meeting will follow. We did that because our agendas tend to be kind of full and we were concerned that if we waited until after the new council met, that we'd just get so far behind. So, we will be having a meeting and I guess the four new business items that'll be on there will be renewal of yard waste composting and drop-off contract, some transit ordinance changes, an issue regarding the Cherry Creek development, and then the Frog Hollow Right-of-Way Acquisition Report by Matt Marash. So, we'd invite people to come to the meeting Thursday, April 12th.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivner. Bob, thanks for all you do for that, for chairing that committee. Any other liaison reports this evening from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to number 12. I have two people signed up to speak. David Maynard? Maymert, I'm sorry. If you could come forward to the podium, please. Tell us your name and address and you have five minutes.
Now would be the time to speak.
Oh, actually, you don't have to wait till then, sir. You can make your comments now. That's what number 12 is all about. All right. And I'm kind of new. I've only been here for a year, so I was confused.
My name is David Maymert. I am a co-owner of JC Mattress Factory and Furniture Store. And at this time, I would like to move to have our name removed from the annexation, the Meadows by the Club annexation. I see no advantage for us to be annexed. No, there's absolutely no positive advantage. I get nothing better as far as police protection, nothing better as far as utilities. In fact, we'll pay more utilities. We'll be at a disadvantage, I think. We'll be, our customers will pay more.
Any questions or comments for David this evening? Okay, thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate it. Next, have on the agenda, on the same subject, is Robert Weiss. Robert, thanks for coming tonight. For the record, please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name's Robert Weiss. I live in Jefferson City. I am an employee of the Prairie Hotel Group. I'm here representing Mr. Prairie tonight. He had to be out of town. I'm the Operations Manager at the Comfort Suites. I've been there for a number of years. I've worked at the Hampton. I've managed it. I've been Director of Sales. It's no surprise to anyone, the hotels are opposed to being annexed. If you look at the map, it appears that we're being annexed just to put money into the Visitors and Conventions Bureau. Mr. Nicholas said to me at the public hearing that it was specifically to level the playing field. I didn't know it was the city council's job to level the playing field with for-profit, free enterprise businesses. He says the tax revenue is insignificant. It doesn't make that much difference. I counted yesterday morning on my way to the hotel, there are 16 businesses right along the edge, the south or north edge of the annexed area that are not being taken in. Some of them are not-for-profits, some churches, but there are also for-profit entities there. He said that when cities annex, it's to build the city and make the city more viable to industry and things coming in. Well, if that's true, why are you skipping those 16 businesses? You know, that doesn't make sense. It's obviously just to take those hotels in because someone's trying to level a playing field. It makes no sense to us to be annexed. Our trash rates go up. We get no better fire service. In fact, our fire service is worse, it's farther away. We have excellent coverage from the Sheriff's Department. I was told by Mr. Nicholas that 95% of the cost of operating or of the budget of the county comes from within the city limits of Jefferson City. I tried to find if that was an accurate number. That seems like a high number to me. But it just doesn't make sense to me that the city of Jefferson would start annexing two businesses, three businesses, because I really believe you're having to take Jefferson City Mattress Factory to get to us, by the way the map's drawn. It just doesn't make sense that you would do that in the name of leveling a playing field. The folks that built those hotels invested their money. We do contribute to the city of Jefferson City. My guests generally don't go to Apache Flats to shop. I do have a few that go down to Dudley's and have dinner, but most of my guests and the guests at Hampton transact their business in the city of Jefferson. They eat there, they buy their gas there, they shop. So, they do add to the bottom line of this city. And then you come in and ask us to come in and have to collect a tax that does nothing for us. And in the name of leveling the playing field, that just doesn't sound right. In fact, the word that comes to my mind is socialism. I mean, how can, where does that stop? There's a furniture store out on South 54. Are you going to take them in because they're going to be at a different tax rate than Jeff City Mattress is now? You're going to take the antique malls in? Are you going to take the smoke shops? I mean, where do you stop if you're going to try to level the playing field? I mean, can anybody answer me that? Why is it the city's job to level the playing field?
Is that all your comments, sir?
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking a question. Is there anybody here that can explain to me why it's the city's job to interfere in for-profit business on the name of leveling a playing field?
Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you for coming tonight. Anyone else here to speak on that particular bill dealing with the annexation that I may have missed? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
My name is Tom Piper. I'm at 5418 Deer Valley Drive, speaking against the annexation issue. If I may?
Tom, you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our Political Action Committee is known as the Committee for Responsible Community Growth, previously known as the Committee Against Forced Annexation. As its chairman, I'm providing you with a brief list of reasons for our opposition to this effort to annex parts of the Meadows by the Club area. The proposed plan of intent unnecessarily includes commercial properties such as JC Mattress Factory, which has just been spoken of, as well as Hampton Inn and Comfort Inn, without their participation in the proposal's development. An appearance of discrimination is emphasized by the plan's failure to recognize and include other commercial property that is immediately adjacent to and near these properties. The impact on these businesses would have a negative financial influence on their viability at a time when they and others are struggling to maintain operations during the challenging time of economic recession. Ironically, the owners and operators of these businesses don't live in these locations, so they're prohibited from voting in the area. And on the other hand, the proposed residential area in the Meadows by the Club supports this annexation and we agree with that inclusion. I hope you understand our position on this latest annexation issue and why the plan of intent does not represent reasonable growth in our community. We hope that you will reduce the size of the proposed area accordingly by removing the commercial property from the plan of intent. And we thank you for ensuring that the public has a chance and a voice to deliberate with this plan. Thank you.
Tom, thanks for being here tonight. Any questions of Tom this evening? All right, thank you once again. Anyone else to speak here underneath number 12? All right, seeing none, we'll close that section and move on to number 13, which is our consent agenda. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to accept one, excuse me, A through E. It's been moved and seconded by Councilman Bray. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have no bids tonight, over $50,000 to look at. So, now we'll look at bills introduced. We'll have first reading of Bill 2011-167.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with All Systems Designed Solutions Incorporated for a door-access system at the White Cotton Building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Yes, thank you. The, this bill here is for, as the clerk said, a contract with All Systems to install 19 electronic door locks and passage system in the Jefferson City Police Department. The money will be taken from the half-cent sales tax, capital improvement sales tax out of the ITS portion of that. And it will do 19 interior doors at the Jefferson City Police Department. Any questions?
Any questions, Bill? Thank you, Bill, for being here.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to first reading of 2011-168.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with JC Industries Incorporated for the Missouri Boulevard Sidewalks Project.
Roger, welcome.
Thank you again, Mayor. I wanted to come up and show you some of these pictures and to report to you that we took bids on the construction project to build sidewalks along Missouri Boulevard. This will be on the south side of Missouri Boulevard from Kansas Street up to Heisinger. And we actually got great bids on this project. We had nine bidders and the low bid was submitted by JC Industries of $339,394.45. This project is going to be funded partially from a grant from MoDOT. We're getting $167,000 of federal enhancement funds for them, for the participation in this project. And the remainder of that will come from the capital improvement sales tax E for sidewalks. As I said, all of the sidewalks are going to be on the south side and the sidewalk's going to be five feet wide, but it's going to vary where it goes along there because of all the obstacles and things that are in our way to actually perform this construction. This project will cut through 30 driveways, our street approaches on Missouri Boulevard. So, there will be some impact to do this construction. We do have safeguards in the contract to try to protect these businesses. If they only have one driveway, we're only going to let them cut half the driveway at a time. And once they start on the driveway, they've got to pursue that work until it's completed. If they have more than one driveway, then we're going to let them take out one of their driveways. But in the case of like McDonald's, if you're familiar with that one, they can only do half of that driveway at a time because obviously it's flow-through traffic at that business. This project, I wanted to show you a couple of pictures. The one that's up on the screen is in the area of Washington Park. And you can see that the dark gray line is where the new sidewalk would go. So, in this area, the sidewalk's actually a little bit of space between that and the roadway on Missouri Boulevard. But if you go on the other side where the ball fields are, we, that's a big, long slope there. We had to tuck the sidewalk right up next to the curb and gutter along that area so that we didn't have to build some big, tall retaining walls. The other thing that we have to do is every place we cross these streets, the sidewalk needs to be basically flat to meet the ADA requirements. And that, in many of these locations, is requiring us to build a fairly long section of new pavement for that street approach or for the driveway. This one happens to be a picture near the Southwest Boulevard where the Schnucks Development is. And if you can see right here where we're crossing, we have to kind of do a zigzag. Part of that is because we do have to miss a number of things there at that intersection. And also, we will be adding pedestrian signals at both the Southwest Boulevard and the Dix Road crossings when we get to that one. We're also adding two pads for bus stops in this section. One of those goes in the Schnucks Development and the other one will go in front of the Alexandro's Restaurant on that end. Okay, this is kind of the west end of the project. This is Heisinger Road in this area. And if you're familiar with Heisinger, the, there's kind of a big bump as you come off of Missouri Boulevard there. We're going to cut that out and actually try to make that transition onto Heisinger much smoother than what it is today to get rid of that bump. And then, we also, in this section, this is the strip center just east of Heisinger, the one with the blue awnings along here. If you recall out there, Missouri Boulevard is the high point and everything behind the curb slopes all the way down to their parking lot. There is no room to really build a sidewalk there. So, what we're having to do in front of that strip mall area is to build a retaining wall up, then put the sidewalk in, and we'll have to put a railing on top of the retaining wall. But then, because we've built it this way, we also have to put a piece of guard rail next to Missouri Boulevard in case someone would ever leave the roadway. You know, they'd fall off of a retaining wall. So, that will look similar when we're finished to what you see up at the Coles area today where that guard rail is in that area. So, it's a good project and something that we've been looking forward to for a long time. And certainly should help with things as far as people getting around on Missouri Boulevard. This is one of our busiest streets in town. And because of that, we have also placed restrictions in this contract that the contractor cannot close lanes on Missouri Boulevard to do any of this work between 7:00 and 8:30 in the morning, between 11:00 and 1:30 at the lunch hour, and then again between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. We would expect they're going to do a great deal of this work at night. The contract's for 115 days, so we would hope that all of this work could be finished around the 1st of August. With that, I'll open it up to whatever questions you might have for me.
Any questions, Roger, on 2011-168?
You answered one of my questions the length of the time. And since it's being done in 115 days, it sounds like you're probably not going to have a lot of utility or maybe no utility relocation involved?
We've looked and already pre-located where all of the utilities are and in fact, did some digging to locate them. There are very few utilities that are actually in the way to do the sidewalk construction.
I thought that might be the case because there was some major work done years ago when they widened and so forth.
Yeah, they were actually looking ahead and trying to get some of those out of the way.
Thank you.
Okay, Roger, on to the next one. We'll have a first reading of 2011-169.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Concrete Engineering LLC for the Broadway Street Neighborhood Improvement Project, 500, 600 block, and the Vineyard Square Neighborhood Improvement Project.
Go ahead, Roger.
This is some more bids that we opened on our neighborhood improvement projects for both Vineyard Square and Broadway. Again, we got fantastic bids. We had eight bidders on this project. The low bid is submitted by Concrete Engineering LLC. They've done work for us previously and we're successful with that. The low bid is $160,118.50. And the way we're paying for this is $40,142 was in the budget for neighborhood improvement projects and the remaining $119,000 comes out of the capital improvement sales tax. Let me answer any questions.
Any questions on 169? Okay, we'll have a first reading of 170.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Transportation Enhancement Funds.
Roger.
This is what I'll call Phase Two of Missouri Boulevard Sidewalk Project. This would go from Heisinger Road, where our previous one that I just... This would go from Heisinger Road, where our previous one that I just talked about, where it ends, it would take it from that point and go west to the Coles Development out there at Stone Ridge. This is for a total of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, which three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight would come from a MoDOT enhancement grant. So, we're asking for your approval to allow us to move forward with an agreement with MoDOT, and then we'll do the design, and hopefully, we can do this construction during next summer.
Any comments or question of Mr. Roger? Bob?
Roger, I, I'm not sure if, I mean, we know, because we heard you tell us before, but I'm not sure the public realizes that our design work is going to meet our cost-share part of this project. So, in essence, that section of highway will come, be paid for, and at least the cash portion of it will be paid for entirely by the MoDOT. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That's, that's our intention as we move forward, and, and the thing that I probably didn't mention also is that this goes west to Coles, but when we get to Stadium Drive, we plan to provide a short extension down to the target driveway, and that would tie into sidewalk that has already been constructed along Stadium. So, that would complete another corridor there, if you will, of a fairly lengthy sidewalk.
When this is finished, will that give us sidewalk on Missouri Boulevard? How far east will we be, all, all the way to the Expressway? Or do we go that far east?
No. We don't go that far east, no.
How far east are we?
Well, the, the first project goes to Kansas, and then there is some existing sidewalk east of Kansas until you get to where the ramps come off Highway Fifty-four.
Okay.
And it ends in there.
From that existing sidewalk all the way out to Coles, then we'll have sidewalk?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Roger, a good job, too, by the way, getting the money from MoDOT that was for Adrian's Island. I think that'd be a, a great use for that within the community, so. Moving on to two thousand and eleven, one seventy-one. First reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a cost-share agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Roger.
We're switching from sidewalks to the airport now. We've got several bills involving the airport, and we were concerned about whether or not we were going to be able to continue our funding of the control tower at the airport, that we were hearing concerns that maybe that was going to be eliminated in the federal budget, but Congress did pass a two-year bill, and this is in agreement with the FAA to fund eighty-two percent of the cost of that, that control tower at the airport. So, pretty positive thing.
Okay. Questions of Roger on one seventy-one? Seeing none, first reading of two thousand and eleven, one seventy-two.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with the operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November one, two thousand and ten, through October thirty-one, two thousand and twelve.
Roger.
This is the other side of that. We just talked about the agreement with the FAA. MoDOT also is willing to participate and cover the fifty percent of the remaining city cost for the control towers. So, in the end, MoDOT would be putting up eighty-six thousand dollars, and they're actually backing up a year. They're, they're picking up half of last year's cost to the city. So, this agreement actually takes it for fiscal years FY eleven and FY twelve for this funding. So, this is a very positive thing and something we're looking forward to.
Okay. Any questions of Roger on one seventy-two? We'll have first reading of two thousand and eleven, dash one seventy-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section nineteen, four oh one, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule H, yield signs, subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of Lewis and Clark at the T turn.
Roger.
We had a request from the Lewis and Clark School to look at putting a stop sign at the T intersection on the, kind of the northwest corner of their school. This was reviewed by the Transportation and Traffic Commission. There was concern by that group and our staff that we may have a potential problem with the stop sign, that it might be violated a lot, because it's, it's a problem when school gets out, and it's a problem when school starts, but any other time during the day, there's really not anyone there. So, the recommendation was actually to put a yield sign at this location, and that's what the Transportation and Traffic Commission approved, and, and we're bringing forward to you this evening.
Any questions on one seventy-three? Now, we'll move on to first reading of one seventy-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section nineteen, four oh one, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule J, parking prohibited, subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to a portion of St. Mary's Boulevard and Williams Street intersection.
Roger.
We had a complaint about this intersection. This is west of Dix Road where St. Mary's Boulevard and Williams Street come together to form a T intersection. There was a large truck that was parking within the intersection and partially blocking traffic, couldn't get through there as, as well as they should. So, this went to the Traffic and Transportation Commission also, and their recommendation is to eliminate the parking just within the T intersection of that location.
Okay. Any questions of Roger? Okay. Moving on, we'll have first reading of two thousand and eleven, one seventy-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a ground lease agreement with Al Elko Incorporated for land at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Roger.
Al Elko is a, an electrical contractor here in Jefferson City. They fly out of our airport frequently, and, and they've reached the point that they would now like to lease a ground space here to build a new hangar on, to, to put their plane in.
Any questions there, Roger? Seeing none, move into bills pending.